I rescheduled regular board of education meeting, um, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, first order of business is to establish a quorum. Jessica?
Bill?
Aye.
Excuse me. Debbie?
Aye.
I am here. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Arlen and Bill are absent. Stacy, we have a quorum.
Yes, we have five instead of just four. Okay. Everybody, please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, I wonder, last month, I announced that our new policy in terms of public comment is that, uh, we welcome public comment for up to three minutes per person. Uh, we are not, uh, allowing, uh, citizens to pass on their time to somebody else. Um, the idea is for people that have comments to share them with us. Um, so, uh, just wanted to reiterate that since we do have some public, and I did want to recognize our elected official, Sherri Clump, Wheeling Park District. Welcome again, Sherri. I'm glad you're with us. Okay, with that, we'll go into board communications, and before I call on Debbie, let me just quickly, quickly, uh, ask for a moment of silence. Two days ago, nineteen children and two professional educators were gunned down needlessly. Um, tragic. We have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I read this morning that since January first of this year, there have been twenty-seven school shootings of some type or another, two hundred and eighteen in the last four years. It's just incredulous that that can happen in this country, but unfortunately, that's where we are. Board communications, uh, Debbie?
Um, I don't have too much myself for N S S E O.
Okay.
Um, normally, I like to talk about our shining stars, but this, this month, our shining star was definitely outdone by the program that was done over at Riley. So if you would please come up and explain it. He can tell it much better than I can because I was practically crying through half of it.
Oh, my goodness.
It certainly was a tearjerker. That is for sure.
Welcome, Kevin.
You may or may not know the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program through N S S E O started at Riley five years ago. Um, and in that time, the program has grown, and that particular program has really just become part of the culture and fabric at Riley. Our, um, our fifth grade students started in first grade with a couple of, um, students from the Deaf and Hearing, Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program. They had interpreters all five years that they were in school. And to see the amount of sign language that our fifth graders were able to develop and utilize over the years was just truly phenomenal, and the way it just became such a part of our fabric and what we do at Riley. And so, um, we decided to have a celebration thanks to our, our amazing teachers in fifth grade. Uh, a program that was just going to celebrate that partnership between us. So we did a Seasons of Love presentation. There were songs. I know Jessica was there, and I know, um, Debbie was there, and Dr. Connolly was there, and, um,
Harland.
And Harland was there, too. And so they got to see a really amazing performance. Just thinking about it, I get a little choked up. Um, and it really was just a celebration of the inclusion and the kindness and the acceptance. Um, and, and I know the, the staff from N S S E O really think it's just been an amazing experience, and they, they felt like they haven't seen a school come together, uh, with kids from their program before like that. And so it was really just an awesome day, day assembly and then evening event. Um, there were kids that came that are preschoolers coming into our program, and a couple of them were, were sold on coming to Riley based on that presentation, which was, which was also amazing to see. Um, but I'd be remiss to say if a partnership like that didn't exist, um, if it wasn't for the support of our school board and N S S E O's, uh, school board. And so for that, we just want to say thank you for all of your support, and I do have a little something for, uh, for all the members of our board.
You can take more than three minutes, Kevin.
I didn't know I was saying anything until about ten minutes ago, so this is, uh, that's, that's, that's what we're gonna get. So I have a couple of, um, I have a shirt. These are the shirts that all of our students and staff made, um, for the presentation. And so I have one for, um, for each of you.
Oh, that's great.
And a big shout out to our friends at Blink Tees who were able to make these in a hurry. That was much appreciated from them.
Kevin, I, I want you to know, I, oh, okay.
I, I want to add to it is when I was there, I was there during the day.
Oh, okay.
And I'm sitting there, and I'm next, Judy Hackett is sitting next to me, and we're just looking out there, and both of us had to keep wiping our eyes because not only were the fifth graders and the other kids up on the stage signing, but you looked out in the audience, and all of the students were signing the whole songs. It was, I mean, I'm getting goosebumps now. It was just so amazing to see that. I mean, you could see the little kindergartners, all they could do was the ABC song because that's all they had gotten so far. But then, you know, but, and some of the kids were just so into it. Look out, London, you've got some actors coming over. Um, it was just so, so beautiful. And I looked at Dr. Hackett, and I, we had our meeting that night, which is why we had to go during the day. And I leaned over and I said, Shining Stars has nothing on this program. And it was, it was just amazing, which is why we're here.
I, I took my kids to the evening performance because I wanted them to see it, and my son, who is eight, he just finished third grade at Tarkington, wanted to know why, when the songs were done, people were doing this. So I explained, you know, what that meant, and he said, well, can I do that? And I said, of course you can. So every song that ended, he was standing there. He was so into it. We got home, and he said, Mom, I want to learn sign language. So I bought a poster of the alphabet, and he's been practicing. He sits at the dinner table, and he signs, hi, Mom, I love you. And it just, it, it's that kind of connected moment where, when we give kids the tools that they need, when we meet them where they are, and we help them along, it's, I mean, it was a truly incredible performance. I was so proud to be part of District Twenty-One, so impressed with everything you guys are doing over at Riley with the partnership. Really was just truly incredible. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Jessica, Kevin, thank you very much for sharing that with us. Appreciate that. My youngest granddaughter, my seven-year-old, um, my daughter has, this is a, a para bro up in District Three Hundred, and she has, does it in a special ed classroom and at the school where her daughter goes. And the youngest one now is signing because of the students that Candace is teaching, is, is helping. She's not teaching, she's helping with it. It's just amazing how quickly the young ones take to it as well. Well, thank you. Thank you. Um, as Jessica mentioned, uh, both Bill and Arlen are out. Uh, Arlen did, uh, send all of us, I think, uh, a synopsis on, um, I S C's latest report from Kevin Yowk. Um, the only thing I wanted to comment on, um, is that, uh, one of the, uh, board members, Eric Witherspoon, uh, ten years superintendent at Evanston and thirty-three years in the business of, um, of education and superintendency. It was his last meeting just recently. Uh, I got to know Eric through I A S B. We did a, we partnered on a, um, uh, program for potential new board members about seven years ago, I think it was. And he's just a wonderful, wonderful guy. It's a loss for, uh, for Evanston, but it looks like they've got a real good replacement from, uh, in, internal. So that's, that's nice. Yeah. So that's that. Um, local government agencies. Stacy, anything to report? Stacy?
I have a quick report, and then I, let Phil know I have a little comment at the end. Um, we were lucky enough to host the Chamber of Partners meeting here in May. Um, so a big thank you to Dr. Connolly, to Cass, to everybody who let, um, let the chamber come in. Um, one of the things they talked about was, um, doing more community involvement between the schools, between the village, between, um, District Two-Fourteen. Uh, they held, hosted a job fair at Wheeling High School, um, and sort of discussed what we all see as the needs in the community as, um, the village and the greater Northwest suburbs come out of COVID. Um, and so we spoke robustly about, um, Wheeling High School hosting that job fair with the manufacturing sector every year going forward, um, and how we, with our, some of our STEM programs and things, could get involved with that. So, um, the representative from Two-Fourteen was actually really excited to, to talk and, um, had mentioned that Les and Dr. Connolly had already spoken a number of times on how we could all get involved. Um, so I want to thank everybody here for allowing us to host that meeting. I'm an associate director. Oh, it's not I?
Oh, sorry. All right. We hosted, we hosted a meeting here. It was great. Thank you very much. Um, but it, it, it goes, I'm an associate director on the chamber board again. I think it, it goes to what I, what we're coming out of now, which is connecting all those dots again in the community that sort of have fallen off and over the last couple of years um, to, to the circumstances of, of, of COVID-nineteen and all that comes with that. So, um, Two-Fourteen is, is talking about, you know, amping up their job recruitment with the manufacturing sector. I see a lot of opportunities for that. I'm very excited about that. Um, and my last little, uh, comment for the evening, hopefully. Um, eighth grade graduation is my favorite night. Everybody knows I love eighth grade graduation. I request actually to do one particular school every year because the energy in that room is so amazing as many of these folks. It's the first time anybody has ever graduated from anything in some of our families. So I, I love it very much. Last evening, we came together as a community to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. In the halls today, in all of our buildings, we celebrated the end of the school year with picnics, with field day, with celebrations. But we all know across the country, they were dealing with something much different. Um, and it was, as someone who works in mental health and deals with kids on a daily basis, I think of that community and the unimaginable grief that's going on there. Um, we are a community here, and we're very lucky that we have a robust community and, and, and what the work that we've done here in District Twenty-One to secure our schools. But everybody's asking, what next? We're very lucky and very blessed, and we worked really hard to make sure that our doors were secure and that we, we put things in place, and we had amazing community support. But it's not enough anymore. Our kids are being radicalized. The hate that's coming out, the tension in the community, it's, it's unimaginable what's going on. And so many people sitting up here have gotten involved. I've gotten involved. It's, it's not one thing. It's not one party. It's not one anything. We need to act like a community. We need to get back and dig in and connect those community dots again. There are people out there that are struggling. So I'm looking forward to the next school year of being able to really go back out in the community. COVID affected all of our communities. We have many, many communities. We have, I, what's the number of languages spoken in our community? A ton. And so we, how many?
Four. Oh, it's up to sixty now.
Sixty different languages. We have many communities. It's time to get in and do some good community work, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Connolly, to working with our strategic partners committee, to really go out and see how our community was affected by the last three years and what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Uh, Jessica, anything?
Uh, just a, a quick note, uh, at Cass's request, and thank you, I participated in an interview with our, um, new marketing team that we're going to be working with. Um, so I met with them last week, and I was able to hopefully convey, um, some of the things we see as challenges and obstacles in our community, things that we think we'd like them to work on. So I, I, I felt a really good rapport coming from the, the young woman who interviewed me. Um, we talked for about forty-five minutes, and I felt like she was able to synthesize back to me really solid nuts and bolts of what I was conveying. Um, so I feel like they're, they're gonna have a pretty good handle on, on our district, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they come up with. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to do that. I, I hope I represented our district well.
Oh, I didn't get any negative feedback, so I think you did, Jess.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm sure they'd come running and tell you how horrible I was.
I did have an opportunity to similarly, um, be interviewed for, for the, uh, for that as well. And, uh, it was a, it was certainly well worth the time and effort. I'm excited to see what comes back when it, when it does. Okay, uh, before we move on, I just wanted to, um, briefly indicate that before our meeting tonight, uh, we had a special, special program that we do every year. Uh, and Bob, thank you for, uh, emceeing it, and Cass for putting a lot of it together. Uh, we recognized our, um, educational support honorees um, from many of our schools. We, uh, also honored, uh, celebrating excellence from representatives on all thirteen of our sites. Um, and unfortunately, we, we recognized and said, uh, a warm goodbye to those retirees that today was their last day in the classroom or, or in support. Um, it's always sort of a bittersweet time. We love saying thank you to all those that we're, uh, honoring. Uh, and we hate to say goodbye to those that are leaving us after fifteen or twenty or twenty-five years. So, um, I was fortunate to be able to share some thoughts with them. Um, we will miss those, uh, that are leaving us. And again, we'll look forward to next year's honorees on both, both ends of that. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Uh, anybody who wishes to address us has up to three minutes. Uh, and you'd come up to the podium as I call your name. Sherri, Clump.
Hi.
Hi, Sherri.
Um, I just wanted to say that when I was a younger woman, I used to interpret sign language at a nursing home I worked at for the doctors and patients. I, I came from a very deaf area, and so hearing Kevin talk tonight and your comments, I'm so excited that that program is in this district. And if you haven't seen the movie Coda, Child of Deaf Adult, I recommend everyone to see it at least once. I haven't seen it my second time, so that was part of my three minutes. But now I'm here to say, um, thank you to all of you and every single staff member in this district. Um, I think people are very fortunate and, and very, um, good to have all of you. So thank you. And then on a fun part, you know, summer doesn't start Saturday, but with the Wheeling Park District, it kind of does because school is over now, so summer camps are going to be starting. And, um, Saturday, the Aquatic Center is open for the season, and I brought some, um, flyers. I did not bring the official flyer. I made some copies. We have a program called Unplug that we go once a week, um, to the various parks in the Wheeling Park District. And each week there, I mean, each time period, there is a special program. Those are listed on here. And if you don't, I did not bring enough for all of you, but if you were to go online, you can see it. It's all there. If you go to the district, it's at the rec center, um, the front. And then there's also a series of summer entertainment. Um, it goes from rock and roll to mariachi bands to all sorts of things. And these are most, the summer entertainment are mostly held at the Performance Pavilion, which is in the southwest side of the Park District on Dundee Road. So I just wanted to leave these with you. And again, thank you. You guys do an incredible job all the way around. And to Catherine, you've known my time to be this tall. He's now this tall. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Three minutes or less?
I'm very efficient.
You've, you've got it down, Sherri. You've got it down. Um, is there anybody in virtual land, Mike?
No, there's not.
Letitia? Anybody? Okay. Okay. We'll move on to, um, agenda item five, superintendent's report. Dr. Connolly?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we have a very brief, um, superintendent's report, uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Dr. Childress, who is going to, uh, just give a, a brief overview of some of the summer programming, uh, student programming that we are going to be, um, hosting this year.
Good evening. Too short for this mic, too. Um, where are you gonna project, where are we gonna project this mic? So, um, I won't spend too much time because we want to keep it short and brief here, but this is just a really high-level overview of the summer programming we're gonna be offering to our students. Um, the first two, the Camp Invention and Summer Steam, those will happen here in June, and those are enrichment programs that we're offering to our students this summer. And then the Summer Learning Academy, um, will be for our students that maybe need some additional support. So they were specifically identified, um, as students who could benefit from some additional support in reading and math, um, as well as our extended year, um, program. So those two programs run, um, during July. Um, and again, serving students who need some additional support. And then our Performing Music, um, Academy that will happen, um, in August there for our students that are currently in those programs. So you can see there how many students have registered for all of those programs and the dates, um, as well as the people who are the contact people and how we're funding the various programs. Uh, all in all, so we have, um, almost twelve-hundred students participating in summer programs this summer. So we're really excited about, um, the offerings that we have, and, um, that's about it unless there's any questions.
This isn't the first time we've been doing summer programming. How's this compare, uh, so far, uh, student-wise with some of the other years?
You mean in terms of enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the Camp Inventions and the, and the Steam, I mean, they, they were filled instantaneously. Uh, and then, uh, as far as our, um, students that are, uh, we're, we're bringing back for some additional support, uh, it's approximately, um, I mean, it's, it's
It's comparable. We, we collapsed, though, our gen ed programming and our programming for our E Ls this year because we wanted to integrate those students more. So that has impacted the numbers a little bit, but, um, the Summer Steam is a new program, and I think Camp Invention this year is also bigger than it has been historically.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's done. Yeah.
Has, are the, uh, timeframes closed already? Are there still time for students to sign up?
Um, I think most of the programs are full. I don't know about E S Y. Kim, are the, are students still able to sign up for that?
Um, well, E S Y is based off of need through the I E P, and so that never closes if a parent changes their mind. Um, and I think just to highlight another, um, option that we're able to do through our Community Partnership Grant, um, we're able to provide some group counseling to our students through Omni. And so, starting next week at Field and Whitman, um, we will have smaller groups, um, but for three hours at a time, students who will benefit from, um, counseling with an Omni therapist who are running those three days a week. So that kind of came together last minute.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? No?
Yeah.
So important to have these programs available for students after the last couple of years of the pandemic. So that's great. Um, next item.
I have one more thing.
Oh.
It's, and, and kind of, I, I just made the decision to do this, uh, just, you know, a couple moments ago, but, um, today is the last, was the last day of school, and I, um, wanted to share just an excerpt of a, a staff, a message to staff that I, I sent, um, earlier today. Um, just kind of trying to recount a little bit of a, a, a year that was certainly one for the record books um, in terms of its, its complexity, in terms of its importance, um, and, uh, challenge. And so again, this is just an excerpt. As we move into an extremely well-deserved summer break, um, I want to challenge each of us to recognize and hold proudly each instance of success we experienced this year. From successfully forming relationships with families and students to establishing a positive classroom culture and successfully welcoming back students who hadn't been in a normal, quote-unquote, uh, school experience for the better part of eighteen months. You made this a year of learning and growth. From embracing new programming and instructional methods with a plethora of new learning materials while placing great emphasis on the social-emotional needs of all students. while placing great emphasis on the social emotional needs of all students, you made this a year of re-engagement and healing. From keeping your focus on students and their ability to come to school in as healthy and safe an environment as possible, to your willingness to always be professional, kind and caring while screening out the noise, you made this a year of quality and consistency. I could go on and on and on. For this year's list of successes is long and true. Events of the last few days certainly put the end of our school year in a different perspective. And it has been hard to keep a focus on the light in dark times. So let us take what respite we are able and come back to continue this work and do it with the conviction and the knowledge that who we are and what we do is vital, noble, and good. And I close by thanking the staff for what they do for the children and families of this community.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to share that.
Well said. I'm sorry. Well said. Okay. Anything else that you'd like to add to the agenda?
Nope.
Dr. Conley?
Nope, we're good.
I'm so glad that you, you offered that, though. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which is a combination of routine items that we do month in and month out. There's two FOIA requests. I went through financial questions with, this time with Mr. Di Bartolo as opposed to Melissa, and he actually answered the questions. So that was good. We have a slight conference and travel expense of under $65 to consider. And, okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica?
I vote yes. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Stacy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And next item is, oh, let me find it. I think we're down to new business.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, yes, new business. And the first item, help me out.
It's approval of bids for asbestos removal.
Okay. Are there asbestos removal-
Yeah.
Any questions on the board on the recommended? Okay. If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Jessica?
I vote yes. Stacy?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Stacy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, employment of assistant principal at Riley School. Dr. Conley?
Yes, we're very excited to recommend to the board that you appoint this evening the first full-time assistant principal at Riley School. This will be the second year for assistant principals next year at the elementary level. And what we learned is throughout the, the course of the year, although Riley is small, they are also mighty. And there's a lot going on. And Kevin needs a first officer, a full-time first officer. And so we're very excited to, to make that recommendation. And Kevin, would you like to introduce your, your first officer?
I'm very happy and proud to introduce Ms. Maracanda for your consideration as a assistant principal at Riley.
Very well, welcome. We're not going to clap yet because we haven't voted. Do you have a presentation that you have prepared for us?
No, no, he doesn't.
Chair will entertain gladly a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Jessica?
Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Stacy?
Yes.
I vote yes, although we will miss you at Tarkington. We wish you the best on your new adventures. Motion carries.
Congratulations. The next item, we have employment of a new principal?
Yes, actually, we have two new principals that we're going to be naming each separately. We're going to start and very excited to bring forward a recommendation for the new principal at Frost Elementary School, someone you are very familiar with, Catherine Joy, who is currently the assistant principal over at Cooper, but for the last two years, but for six years prior to that, served in a administrative capacity at the district level and as a human resources coordinator, where she led the, the Illinois State PDS Teacher Intern Program and as well as, as, you know, a lot of other HR-related duties. But we are very excited to, to bring her in as a building principal in the district. Catherine has been part of this district for a long time, 28 years. I wanted you to say it before I did. And she is going to be, she's going to hit the ground running over at Frost. She is very familiar with the staff, with the positives and the, and the challenges of that school community. And we're just really pleased to welcome her to that role.
Welcome, Catherine. Any questions? Show me not?
Well deserved.
Motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Jess?
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Stacy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Stacy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome, Catherine.
Welcome, Catherine.
I thank you for this opportunity, not only as an educator who I believe in District 21, but also just because my own two sons have gone to District 21. My husband and I moved here and since my, my youngest was at Hawthorne, and now he just graduated Buckle Brook High School. So I should max in District 21 as a parent, as an educator, and as a community member. So I, I appreciate your trust in giving me the helm at Frost. I'm very excited to get back.
Well, if anybody can hit the ground running, it is you in this particular role with the experience that you've had in the district. So we're looking, looking forward to having you down there at Frost. Dr. Conley?
So our, our next very excited recommendation to bring forward is for the new principal at Joyce Kilmer Elementary School. And she, actually, perfect timing, is a panelist on our Zoom. She just landed in Atlanta where she is attending a, a professional development at the Ron Clark Academy, which is a program that Kilmer has really embraced. And, and, and so she's already taking, you know, the, the lead in, in making sure that she, you know, can lead her staff in something that they've identified as, as value-added to the, to the climate and culture of their, of their school. So Annette McBride is, just joined us this year as the assistant principal at Kilmer. Prior to that, she was an assistant principal in Ron Lake. And she really has become just an amazing part of the, of the, the staff and the, the family over at Kilmer. And so it really was kind of a no-brainer to, to name her to be Matthew Lombardo's successor. And Kilmer is going to be in really, really good hands. So Annette, I'm sorry that, you know, we had, we stressed you out. I can see the, I can see the Delta sign. You're, you're literally at the gate. Right. So you're not on the plane, are you? Okay, all right. But we, we appreciate you pulling out the phone and, and being part of this, so.
Very good, very good. Any questions? A motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Jess?
Phil?
Aye.
Stacy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome, Annette.
Thank you very much, thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't be there.
Was it our reputation that you didn't want to be here in person?
Not at all, not at all.
Well, we're, we're glad that you got there safe and got on the ground and were able to join us. And I know you want to get to the hotel and you probably have a very early morning tomorrow. They tend to start pretty early at, at these things. So Annette, just thanks very much for, for taking on this role and, and for joining us tonight.
Of course, it's my pleasure. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too, thanks.
Next item is multi-year administrator employment contracts.
Unless there are questions?
The board having any?
Nope.
Questions? Nope. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
And second.
Oh my.
Stupid, untold, man.
Go ahead, Jess.
Stacy?
Yes. Yes.
I vote yes. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda before we adjourn is the superintendent compensation for the next year, 2022 to 2023. I think we can all understand that we've had education, public education has had an incredible last two and a half, three years. And we've been very fortunate to have Dr. Conley at the helm of this district. And the job that he's done has been incredible. So Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Jessica?
Stacy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
We just, I just wanted to say one real quick thing. We honored Sandy Cruthers this evening at our retirement reception. I had the honor of being at the wake last week for Ken. He was really, I, I can't think of any building in this district that he didn't help out and work at or do something at. He was really there and he was there for my kids when they went through Field and London and everything else as, as a supportive face. And he will be missed in this district a great deal. But Sandy is a wonderful, wonderful lady and we will miss her as well.
Well said, well said. The last item then is our next Board of Education meeting will be our regular meeting on a regular date, which is the third Thursday. We had to postpone it this month. So the next meeting is June 23rd, 2022, in this room at 7:00. And the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Jessica?
Phil?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Stacy Allen?
Yes.
And Stacy Gess?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Have a good summer. For those of you that are at this table, we'll see you next month.